All right, so we have a very, very full room. And this is a project that's aroused a great deal of public interest. And I'm excited that we have such a full house and there is so much interest. But I do ask that members of the public remember that there is work to do at this meeting. And let us get through the presentation and the issues before us as calmly and peacefully as we can. With that, if you have time, would please introduce yourself and your presentation.
Catherine Wolf, Troybridge Wolf Michael's Landscape Architecture.
Arden Tietzke, Icahn five Architects.
William Michael, Troybridge Wolf Michael's Landscape Architecture. We have a presentation for you this evening to make a very brief introduction. And then I am going to turn it over to our architect, Arden Tietzke of Icahn Architects. And you two are going to just give a brief overview for people who might not be familiar with the project. To summarize the benefits of the project, this project will assist Cornell in the current and future demand for on-campus housing. A major goal is to improve the student experience. It will allow Cornell to provide surge space for deferred maintenance projects. And then finally, the project supports municipal and county housing goals. The project is located within the city of Ithaca and the town of Ithaca. The majority of the project is within the city. The sophomore site is located on what is currently the CC lot. And that will be approximately 800 beds plus a dining facility. And the dining facility will serve all of North Campus. The first-year site spans the city of Ithaca and the town of Ithaca. And that will include approximately 1,200 beds. The project is developed completely on areas that were previously developed. As I mentioned, the CC parking lot. And the first-year site is developed on what is currently a portion of the parking lot adjacent to the hotel, as well as recreational fields. It is infill housing in an existing student housing neighborhood. And it is entirely consistent with existing zoning. This is the preliminary site plan for the project. The sophomore village, as I mentioned, there is a dining facility which will replace the design dining at Robert Trisal Union, which is surrounded by residence halls that are four and five stories. And then the first-year site creates a new green academic quad, which is designed to be integrated with the surrounding academic spaces. So to design the project with the lowest carbon footprint, there are really three primary components. There's the source energy. There's the building design itself. And then there's ongoing operations that ensure that this operates in a sustainable way. At our last meeting, our last presentation to you, we really focused on the efficiencies of the Cornell Keaton Power Plant and its source cooling, as well as discussed the sustainable operations. So this evening, we are going to focus on the middle element here, and that is the high-performance building design. And so with that, I'd have to turn it over to Arden Tietzke.
Thank you, Catherine. First of all, good evening to everybody. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the North Campus Presidential Expansion Project. And as Catherine has stated, my goal here is to really focus on the number of high-performance design elements of this particular residence project. Overall, our goals of the project is to create a great learning and living experience for the freshmen and sophomores that call it Cornell University, and also meet the energy goals of Cornell's 2035 Carbon Neutral Initiative. These two goals, by the way, are not exclusive. And our philosophy is that most successful projects are the ones that meet the social needs of the users, while being good stewards of the environment also. I'm going to share with you a number of architectural, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical initiatives that are integrated into these high-performance, energy-efficient buildings. This project is being designed for LEED Gold certification. And we are working towards achieving those goals, and we believe we will accomplish those goals. Through envelope design, glass technology, energy-efficient mechanical, plumbing, and electrical systems, our project is 30% more efficient than the latest ASHRAE 90.1 2013 code requirements. Actually, our buildings are more efficient than even the 30%, because Cornell has a very restrictive requirement that says that your measurements must be taken at the building. So the efficiency of the district plan is not accounted for within the 30%. If we were incorporating the district plan as part of our goals, we would be closer to 35%. Another very important factor in the design of this residence hall project is how does one determine the peak load demands for cooling and heating? Because they have a major influence on the building systems, as well as energy consumption. Our peak load demands are really based on two very important factors. Number one, the professional standard engineering calculation values, which tell you how much peak load you have. And then there's a second component, which is very, very unique to Cornell, which is Cornell has immense amount of data as to how their current buildings perform. That live data gives us the ability to weigh the calculated numbers and basically put them to a real test of what should be the peak demand fault. And when we did that, we cross-referenced those numbers. And initially, what we started was, we believed we needed about 1,200 tons of cooling and about 27,000 MWhs of heating. But when we cross-referenced those two pieces of information, we were able to design our facility for 640 tons of cooling. That's a drop of almost 600 tons. And 19,000 MWh for heating, another major drop, because we had that data and we cross-referenced it with our engineering values. I know there's a lot of conversations about window-to-wall ratios, but in order to create a great learning and living environment, an environment that builds on historical large, open quadrants angles, and kind of develops a relationship between interior program and exterior spaces, transparency, daylight, and views are essential elements. Our architectural design reflects the above-mentioned goals. And therefore, the amount of glass and windows are driven by the program and proportional to the exterior wall surfaces. Since this project is predominantly residential dorms, a vast majority, which is shown on the right-hand side, of the facade is punched-window openings. And its windows-to-wall ratio is approximately 22%. And as you get to the social bars, which is all the way on the left-hand side, and the social spaces, which is in the middle, that percentage rises higher per window-to-wall ratio. Please keep this in mind, when you have a residential program, by its nature, it dictates a certain dimension or width of the building. You have a double-loaded corridor of rooms. And therefore, a number of windows, which are necessitated by code, are also required for those rooms. And all of the windows and these spaces that provide daylight are really for the wellness and the health of all of its inhabitants. At other locations, where we have the social programs on the first floor, the window wall is designed as a colonnade. It helps in the solar shading. And also, in other locations where the window wall is actually at the exterior envelope, we have a very efficient curtain wall to promote transparency and connectivity to the outdoor spaces. These residences are all designed to promote wellness by limiting the height of the buildings. These buildings are all walk-ups, they're all four or five stories. And because they're walk-ups, it was very important also to locate the stairs, which are accessible, not only physically, but obviously visually. We want to basically take the elevators out of the mix. We want them to use the stairs and elevators on a constant basis. So therefore, these buildings not are promoting daylight, they're promoting the views, but they're also promoting the wellness of its inhabitants. What I'm going to show you in the next couple of slides are images of the buildings that are being developed. Inclusive of the architectural design, we have incorporated a number of design elements that are essential components of our high-performance, high-energy-efficient buildings. We have a high-performance insulated glazing with a U-value of 0.27, and I'm going to elaborate on that in a few seconds. We have ceramic brick on the second surface of the glazing to reduce heat gain on the south and west exposures. Ceramic brick is a material that is baked on in the shop, and basically, it's something that cannot be removed, it's integral with the glazing system. We have canopies at entrances for shading and limiting solar gain. And finally, we have daylight. And the daylight is one of the best ways to reduce power consumption by turning off artificial lights during the day. We've also incorporated a number of horizontal lubebers and sunscreens in the appropriate locations, especially where we have curtain walls. And they also help in the process of shading and lowering the solar gain. We're specifying the insulated glazing with low iron composition, so therefore, it's more clear and you can see outside. With low heat coating in order to limit solar gain. And finally, the gap between the two panes of glass and an insulated glass is filled with argon gas for additional insulated value. Majority of the time, that space is left there, just basically as an airspace, not a gas space. And finally, within the rooms, we're also providing manual roller shades on the interior to reduce solar gain. And actually, that's probably one of the best ways also to reduce energy consumption, so you can limit the amount of sun coming into a particular room. The following is a typical wall section of the terracotta embedded insulated precast wall system for this project. And we're providing, currently, we're in the process of creating a mock-up to finalize its colors. The following elements make it a highly energy-efficient wall system. Number one, we have a high-performance roof insulation, which has an R-value of 49. ASHRAE, the current code is 90.1 2000, only requires R20. In this scenario, the higher the number, the better. Second wall, the high-performance glazing that I was talking about, has a U-value of 0.21 and a solar heat gain coefficient of 0.25. Again, in ASHRAE 90.1 2013, it requires a U-value of 0.45 and a solar heat gain coefficient of 0.40. In this scenario, lower the number, the better. And also, we have a high-performance wall insulation, which is a continuous R25.5. ASHRAE requires an R-value of R14. And just as a reference, we know there is a project which is highly efficient, but it's a wood-framed building, and that made of wood. It has an R-value of 21, and it's continuous. And our building is actually slightly better than that. It's a lot better than that. It's a continuous 25.5. And finally, there's another important factor to keep in mind. The wall system that we have here is a terracotta embedded insulated precast panel system. And what I mean by that is, it's a 12-inch-thick system. It has an exterior precast of three inches, which the terracotta is attached to. Then it has four inches of insulation, and then it has another five inches of precast. We are going through the process of finalizing that, but it's going to be a 12-inch-thick precast panel. And when you do an energy modeling, the energy modeling does not allow you to take advantage of that mass. It only accounts for the insulation that you use, not the actual R-value of those amounts of precast that we have here. So we use the four inches of insulation to get above the 30%, but we believe, again, we don't have the district plant in here, and we don't have the mass of this building in here, and we believe we're going to do better. And I think that's a great thing, because at the end of the day, when Cornell is evaluating these buildings, what they're going to find is, that too is going to lead credence to the fact of why we lowered the peak load demands, because there is a reason to do it, and they believe we can achieve those needs. Beyond the architectural components and elements that are integrated for a high-performance design, we have a number of numerous mechanical strategies to achieve a high-performance design, such as, we have 100% of ventilated air would include heat recovery, and that's in the cooling cycle, as well as the heating cycle. We have a minimum of 60% of the air from the dining hall would be used to balance the kitchen hood exhaust, which again is helpful, because it reduces the total makeup air requirements, which in turn helps to conserve energy. We're using variable speed fans rather than constant, because the variable give you the ability to basically turn them on and off on demand, rather than having constant motors running. And therefore, we can modulate the airflow to meet instantaneous demands dictated by occupancy and internal loads, rather than just constantly running them. We're also using variable speed pumps for hot water and chilled water, again, for modulating airflow to meet instantaneous heating and cooling demand, not a constant demand. Couple of other things, such as, we have demand-controlled ventilation for densely occupied common space. Again, if went deep in the common space, the occupancy goes down, the motors can ratchet down, and therefore save energy. We have occupancy-based temperature and air setback strategies for unoccupied periods. And finally, we have electronically-commuted motors for four-pipe fan coil units. The technology of today's motors is much better, and they help us also to save energy and conserve energy. Within the plumbing discipline, we have incorporated the following energy-reducing and sustainable measures. We're using low-floor plumbing fixtures to reduce water usage. The appliances that we are using in this have an Energy Star rating for high efficiency and reduced power loss. And obviously, being residences, we have laundries, and therefore, we're using demand-controlled dryer exhaust, again, to reduce energy consumption. There's a very important factor that we've also incorporated in this project. We've incorporated a hot water infrastructure that is designed to operate at a lower temperature, we're at between 130 and 100 degrees. This gives Cornell the flexibility to switch to future renewable energy sources. And geothermal is one of them, but it does not have to be the only one. This was one of the main reasons for incorporating a four-pipe fan coil system. The flexibility to switch to a deep-earth energy source is extremely important, and we have already designed this system to be able to be switched out at a later date. Similar to the mechanical and plumbing disciplines, we're also incorporating a number of power-saving strategies. We have high-efficiency LED lighting, interior as well as exterior. Overall, the lighting power we're using is 25% less than the current code. The exterior lighting power we're using is 25% less than the current code. The lighting is tied to occupancy and daylight sensors, again, to reduce unnecessary use. Occupancy and vacancy sensors in common spaces are also employed to reduce unnecessary use. I know we said that we were trying to discourage people from using the elevator, but when they do, we have regenerative elevators. What that means is, the motor transforms the mechanical power into electrical power, another way of creating some additional bonus through the use of an elevator. And finally, we also have a reduced light power density as part of the project. We're also submetering of major energy end uses, such as lighting plug loads, so to facilitate a transparency of resource usage and encourage improved occupant habits. This is more about the users and their using space to give them a guide into being more sustainable. We have smart elevator controls to optimize elevator travel patterns, and therefore, we're letting the computers guide us in making better decisions and better savings of energy. And finally, our site lighting output, which is reduced by 50% after hours, because we have motion sensors to automatically bring the lighting level up to full brightness when it's required. In conclusion, there are a number of design elements and system strategies that are working together to create a high-performance, high-efficient building. Buildings that will be LEED Gold certified. And at a minimum, we are going to be 30% more efficient than the latest ASHRAE 90.1 2013 code requirements. Thank you.
I just have very brief concluding comments. I wanted to actually just underscore, the architects have been looking very hard to make these buildings as efficient as possible. And so it had been proposed as a LEED silver and as our vintages inform you, so that's new news. They've been working really hard to make the best possible, and now they're confident they can do LEED gold. So I think that's a, you know, we're also listening and we're working hard to do the best we can do. And just in conclusion, I wanted to remind you that, so this project produces less greenhouse gas today than the other alternatives. However, Cornell is committed to their carbon neutrality by 2035, and it is their intention to get off gas by 2035. And that's why the project is also designed to be flexible for the future, and the system that are being described allows the buildings to be switched over to whatever renewable energy source makes sense in the future at that time.
I actually had a question around that anyway, around the future renewable energy source implementation. What plan is in place for what type of renewable energy is and when and how? And I mean, you've given us a rundown, of course, and I think that the public is still interested in, like, why not now? Why not renewables now? Or at least partially now? I think that that would help, it would help the board and probably help the public to understand or accept any proposal on the table if we saw some, you know, concrete goals, timeline goals for renewables in the future.
Well, one thing I would point out, and maybe you received a letter where this is outlined, I'm not exactly sure which one it is, but, so Cornell is currently very actively pursuing large-scale solar projects. And, I don't know if you can find that.
In one of our recent mails.
It was in one of your, I think it was described in your packet that you originally received. And...
On page 10 of the September 5th letter, there's some... On page nine and 10, there's a description of Cornell's path for future energy systems. And then, just give me a second here. It's also very outlined in their climate action plan on their website.
But they do have a timeline, 2035, and I think they're pursuing all avenues. And, but there's some very specific information in this, in your packet about the solar. And in fact, they're, some of the solar initiatives that are underway will offset energy from this project. I mean, it won't be assigned to that offsets, but they aren't, because they aren't, that's not how they're dealing with their solar. They're developing solar at a large scale, as opposed to project by project. And so there is detailed information about that included in your handout. And I can't speak to the details of specifics of, but I, of timeline, intermittent timelines. I think that they are pursuing all avenues. There is a timeline at 2035 to carbon neutral.
I should have one question, which if you can't answer today, maybe you can answer next month. But one of the things that came up in one of the letters is the fact that half of the new beds would be served beds, as I understand, to allow renovation of other buildings on North Campus. Is that correct?
In one of the letters, tell me what you found.
Well, I mean, what I need to say is that the part of the goal of this project is to allow other buildings to be shut down for a year of renovations.
Yes.
That's correct, right? So it might be interesting to hear, just in broad terms, when you renovate some of the older buildings, in other words, when this project allows for the renovation of older buildings, because of the additional service base, what kinds of energy improvements could be made for some of the older buildings?
We can, if you could run that, could make a brief review.
Another question from the board, before we move forward, public here.
You mentioned LEED gold. That's great to see that you went from silver to gold. Why not platinum?
Frankly speaking, part of the reason why we went to LEED gold was because we were, you know, as projects develop, you're looking at opportunities. And we were coming close to the edge of LEED silver, where the jump to LEED gold was very close. And we think we can achieve, based on commissioning and other elements. We believe we can achieve and get up to 64 to 68 points and achieve LEED gold. As you know, platinum is almost, I think, 14 points higher than that. Don't quote me on that, but I think it's much higher. And frankly, you know, when you look at LEED, LEED is just not pure energy specific. It has eight categories in it. Energy is one of them. And out of 110 points, energy is 33. So even if you have maximized your energy points, it does not guarantee you even a LEED silver project at that point. It's all those other criteria that you need to meet in order to jump to the next level and then other more classifications to jump to the LEED platinum level. I personally think, based on where we are, by, based on the site, based on water, based on energy, based on recyclable materials, and all those other things, I think gold, and maybe even getting gold up to a good level, is really, really a good achievable pace for this project. Other ones of site and stuff like that will be very hard to achieve, and I think you really would have to almost generate your own energy to get to that platinum level. And I just don't see how we're going to get to that level.
Another question, from the board, before we move forward, here.
The goals for energy efficiency are great. Commend Cornell for aiming high. Commend the architects for also aiming high. We want to reach for the stars, and Catherine started to speak this just in her closing remarks, but I think, you know, it's a member of the board and also a member of the public one here, is estimates, tracking, quantification, pledges to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We heard that mentioned once or twice. And, you know, until there's some articulation of the tracking of that and actually how to do that versus just, you know, what is energy-efficient design, because then there's tenant behavior, then there's aging of the facility, right? Maintenance costs, so on and so forth, that you can design this, but, you know, once it's all in operation, unless you keep it tuned up and running smoothly, you know, you're not necessarily, when it comes to greenhouse gas emissions and the pledges to reduce and to meet the goals of the university and rebuilding policies, so on and so forth. That's still where we're trying to get to, and we're still talking about building functions and not the long-term goal cycle of climate action planning.
So if you're talking about accountability for the building, tracking for the building, one of the things we talked about before in terms of sustainability... one of the things we talked about before in terms of sustainability actions is, is commissioning?
Yeah.
And, and advanced, and advanced commissioning. Right? And then also, uh, Cornell has a system that they monitor everything all the time and dial their energy use up and down. And that relates to one of the things Arvin said about, um, the submetering that allows them to get really detailed information.
Uh, I think it's in Cornell's interest. They do it because it's good for Cornell in the sense that you want to know how your buildings are performing. Uh, you want to tweak them to perform better because at the end of the day, it's, um, it's good for you, it's good for the environment, it's also, it's cost effective. So to let a building just fall apart, it makes no sense from either side.
Absolutely. And I think one of the follow-ups from the last conversation we had in the last class meeting was around commissioning and ensuring that the numbers that go into design are the numbers that contribute through performance.
Well, and, and one of the requirements of LEED gold is enhanced commissioning. And, and so there's, it's, there's a big commitment there that you have to, on a, for perpetuity, have this, well, it's, I don't know, actually, but the timeframe is, I don't think that, there, there might be a certain timeframe. But enhanced commissioning is part of LEED gold. So that ensures that you are operating it according to the goals that we have set.
Well, it's still keeping in mind that the energy part of LEED really is only thirty-three percent of the overall thing. So LEED is really environmental design, right? The energy piece is, is minority.
Correct.
So you'd hope that the commissioning might be a little more robust than what's in LEED. And it may be up to your team to define, you know, a higher, higher standard.
Well, again, I mean, Cornell monitors their buildings twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah.
And, and they're constantly going in. And if something's not working efficiently, then they're, and they're, so is that not sufficient? I'm, I'm not quite following what you're looking for.
I, I'm trying to hit on all fronts, which is, yeah, the building monitoring that happens is excellent. I'm more aware of that program. And I think if there is an accounting of the emissions that go along with that and that metric is included in the overall function, then the public would feel more informed about what is the overall contributory factor of greenhouse gas emissions through the functions of the buildings, not just in terms of base energy use, but of the output and impact on, thank you, large.
So they, so you're looking for more than that? So they publish the real-time energy use on campus, right? You're familiar with that?
Greenhouse gas emissions are part of that energy use. And then broken down by types of emissions.
You know, greenhouse gas is not published in real time, no.
Can it be tracked and estimated and quantified?
Let's hide that more. Yeah. I'm not quite following you.
Yeah, right, right. I'm just trying to really understand what you're looking for so that we can get back to you.
I think that's what the public is going to be asking in questions. It's not really just about building design, it's about what you're contributing to.
So we provided the calculations for the greenhouse gas emissions. And so you're saying some understanding of how that will be tracked on a long, uh, long-term basis? On one basis?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments on the board prior to public hearing? We'll have a time to talk after the public hearing. Seeing none. All right, before I look to open up public hearing, I do want to speak to the public just very, very briefly. Uh, I made this announcement at the beginning of the meeting, but I see a lot of new faces. We are going to limit the time for this public hearing to thirty minutes. Now, if there are people waiting to speak, when those thirty minutes are over, we will extend this public hearing to the next time Cornell is before us for the North Campus residential expansion, which I believe will be next month. So you will have a time to speak, uh, you know, if you're not got to today. Uh, I'd also recommend anyone who wishes to communicate with the board, sitting before us and speaking here is not the only way to do it. We've received a lot of very good comments via email, via letters, via other written submissions. We read everything. We read everything that the public sends us. Uh, it is the best way to communicate with us about a project. The other thing is that we hear in person a lot of the same points made over and over by different people. And we appreciate people wanting to sort of raise the volume of an issue. Uh, but the best way to repeat points is in writing. When you're in front of us and talking to us, we really want to hear your specific issues that maybe aren't shared by the other people speaking before us. We really want to hear as many different points and opinions from the public as we possibly can. Um, and again, very interested in receiving lots of comments and writing. I know that there's more people here that want to speak than are going to be able to speak tonight. So we really do encourage people to communicate with us through other channels. Uh, if you come up with written comments that you don't have time to get through, or you have written comments that you don't get to present tonight, please hand those to Anya. She's sitting here right here at the foot of this table. Uh, she will take those, and she will get them to all of us, and we will read them and we will think about them. We take this seriously. Please don't think that because you don't get to speak tonight, or don't get to speak as long as you want tonight, that we don't care what you think. That isn't true. To make sure we hear from as many people as possible tonight, we are limiting individual speaker time to ninety seconds. Now, that's down from the three minutes in your agenda. I'm sure there are people who are going to be disappointed by that. I would just reiterate, if you have prepared comments, please just hand them to us in written form. We will go through them, we will think about them, we will consider them as carefully as we consider all the material before us on, on these projects. With that, it is our motion to open, open public hearing on this project. Garrett moved, you have a second? Mitch second? All in favor, both of you? We have public hearing. I'm going to start with the sign-in sheet. First, I have Anne Redman.
No, I was going to ask you.
Nope?
No.
Julie Capovari.
Hello.
Please move forward. You have ninety seconds?
I wrote something down so that I can see what it says from the time frame. Hi, my name is Julie Capovari. I'm a senior Cornell studying environmental science and climate change. I'm in a student-run organization called Climate Justice Cornell. We wrote and circulated a petition regarding the North Campus expansion, which currently has under six hundred signatures, just under six hundred signatures, eighty-five percent of which are Cornell students, faculty, and the rest are mostly Cornell alumni head of residence. In that petition, there was a section for community comments, only a fraction of which were submitted to the board ahead of time because we got around sixty comments and we didn't want to make you read all of them. Almost all the comments pertains to the lack of a comprehensive environmental impact statement instead of merely environmental assessment forms, the lack of comprehensiveness of using a LEED standard as a metric for building performance. But working within that metric, why is the Cornell Climate Action Plan setting the bar to LEED silver for all buildings on campus? The lack of an upstream methane leakage accounting mechanism from the Dominion Parket gas pipeline, and the lack of inclusion of student opinions. We would like to highlight today that the design of the building, um, would request something very feasible for that. Uh, the window-to-wall ratio should be reduced to an optimal fifteen percent for the sake of better building insulation, which requires a lower energy load from the methane-effect gas plant that will power the expansion project. Uh, administrators claim that they consulted us students about this, and the large windows would increase mental health and, uh, wellness. But after conducting this petition, we found that many students either had no idea that there was even an expansion on North Campus, uh, in the first place. And many students said that there were several more important and directly more efficient methods that would support mental health for students.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you getting through this stuff on time. Next, I have Milo Vella.
Um, yes, I'll keep this very brief. Um, I just wanted to bring up, um, the two points which are, that I'm, well, actually, I'll just keep it to one, actually. The fact that, um, I'm appreciative that the administrators have put a lot of work into energy, monitoring, and efficiency, but at the same time have not decided to pursue passive house certification as they did at Cornell Tech, which I find very frustrating, um, especially if there's no transparency, which there has not been through any of this project, um, as to, um, as to why they're not doing that. So that's a, that's an ask that I have.
Thank you very much. Gabriella, there you go.
Hi, Gabrielle, thank you so much. I'm going to leave off where Julie didn't finish. Um, basically, the, there's some more important and directly efficient methods that support mental health for students, such as improvement of resources for, and through Cornell Minds Matters and other support organizations. Um, therefore involving students in the planning process and insulting the older people to reduce top-down assumptions and live communication, and especially crucial for something that directly concerns student life and is really important to a lot of us. Um, we've written a resolution that we will present to the student senate next week and we will be meeting with Provost Kalkoff in late October to discuss these sustainability concerns. Uh, in light of Cornell's commitment to the carbon neutrality by 2035, we believe as students that with the long future of climate change ahead of us at the city, I think we should do everything to, and it's jurisdiction to ensure that this expansion project is the most committed to planning and more, and the most sustainable it possibly could be. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like you're reading off something. Please do try to submit that digitally so we can read that.
Thank you.
Uh, next, I have Ezra Stein.
Hi, my name is Ezra Simone. I'm a student at Cornell. I'd just like to comment on, uh, Cornell's goal for carbon neutrality by 2035. I'd like to say that during an essay meeting in 2018 in spring, Martha Pollak, the current president of Cornell, stated that if earth-sourced heat turned out not to be feasible, all bets would be off for carbon neutrality. So for me, that doesn't inspire much confidence in administration that they're committed to this goal. And it doesn't inspire much confidence in the student body. So I think we need more accountability on the administration, especially if they're going to leverage the climate action plan as a reason for this, this project being built as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last name I have on my sign-in sheet. Is there another sign-in sheet?
I have one here just so that they can, they'll announce their names and then sign in so that...
I can give their names correctly into the record?
And I'm going to put my address, my email address up on the board.
Perfect, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to go with the hands. I saw your hand first, sir, in the front row.
Hi, I'm Buzz Levine. I've submitted written comments to you, or I did email to you earlier, but here I want to focus on one particular issue in a little more depth. And that has to do with quantifying the greenhouse gas emissions that Cornell promised they would do from the request two weeks ago by your, your P E D C board members, um, to give that information. Uh, the meat of that response is summarized in their table, uh, on page nine of that, of that submission. And when I looked at that, I first thought that that table indeed did account for upstream methane emissions, which is what they were asked to do. Because the emissions column was labeled CO2 equivalence, not just plain CO2. That's the notification that they're looking at the methane emissions and what their efficacy would be in CO2 values. Even the footnotes labeled the emissions as CO2 equivalence. However, after taking the trouble to check the source information from the footnotes to go to the sources, it became apparent that the numbers do not actually account for those upstream methane emissions at all and therefore should not have been labeled CO2E rather than just CO2. Cornell's numbers are in that table, which is the primary table to answer those questions about their greenhouse gas emissions. Those numbers are very, very misleading. And it makes me, as a Cornell alum and a community member, extremely frustrated and somewhat, uh, somewhat ashamed of my, of my alma mater.
Thank you very much. Next hand. Anyone wishing to speak before the board on this project? Who raised your hand? You, ma'am.
I'm from Sussman High County, Pennsylvania. I'm coming from a fracked county. I'm one of the top four producers of gas in Pennsylvania. I want to request Cornell to please consider us, that we are being fracked for the gas that they're using. And please don't wait to 2035. That means another seventeen years of being drilled and fracked. We now have sixteen hundred gas wells in my county alone. We have twenty-five counties that are supplying gas and fifty-two compressor stations to process it just in my county. It's next to our homes, next to our schools, and hundreds of miles of our pipelines. We have to endure this ten years now. That means another seventeen years before they stop using gas. It's a moral imperative to please consider us in, across the border. And if they stop using it, people stop using the gas, they will stop fracking us. So I, I beg Cornell to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other people wishing to speak before the board on this project? I saw you, sir.
Uh, my name is Charles Gislar. I'm a Cornell professor emeritus, um, that is, I am, um, very mindful of the question that, uh, you and committee asked about what would it take to have a LEED platinum status? And that's an excellent question. The answer, we recall, was, well, we would have to have our own, uh, on-campus grid of generating capacity. And I am circulating comments by emeritus professor Tony McGravia, an engineer from Cornell, who is decidedly in favor of doing a complete and comprehensive E I S. It's imperative that we do that. He has three issues he raises in the handout. The second of which is about alternatives, and he has done the computations for using Cornell's own on-campus hydroelectric station in Fall Creek, which would generate forty percent of the energy needed for the new dorm expansion. That combined with lake-source cooling and ground heat pumps, earth-source heat pumps, would exceed, excuse me, would be considerably less, according to Professor McGravia, in terms of greenhouse gases than what the current proposal before you is going to generate. Please take him seriously in Cornell. Please stick your guns and do an E I S.
Thank you very much. Uh, other people wishing to speak before the board on this project? Please raise your hand. I saw you, ma'am.
My name is Marley McCray. I'm here with a statement written by Joseph Wilson, uh, which is being distributed. Uh, I'm going to read you the highlights. To meet the requirements of SEACER, energy and emissions issues must always be assessed for their significance. Methane is one of the greenhouse gas emissions to be included. The long-term impacts of using gas and generating emissions as proposed will last for the fifty-plus years of useful life of the N C R E buildings. These impacts are significant, and no reasonable, practical, and timely alternatives have been offered by Cornell. An E I S is necessary to identify such alternatives. The cumulative impacts of gas and emissions coupled with a proposed building to a design standard less than net zero must be considered as a significant negative impact. An E I S should be used to find a wider range of reasonable and practical alternative designs. There is a wider range of reasonable and practical alternatives to offset the impacts of gas and emissions that Cornell has presented. They deserve a review as part of an E I S. Under SEACER, the decisions regarding the range of alternatives to be considered in an E I S and which ones might be required are to be made by the city, town, and village, not by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak before the board on this project? You with the corner.
Hi, my name is Joya. And, um, I just wanted to speak on behalf of most Cornell students from the petition and how we, how we were involved in the planning of this, of the new buildings as much as I feel like we should have been because it pertains to such a big part of student life. In addition, I feel like an E I S would definitely allow us to explore different options and what students actually want. Because if architects come with nice designs, of course, they're going to say, wow, that looks great. Because we don't have the technical know-how of actually understanding the environmental impacts of these buildings. So I feel like, I feel like, sorry, having an environmental impact statement really would show us different options and would allow us to make a much better... and would allow us to make a much better and coherent, a much better and coherent decision on how to move forward for a project that impacts student life so greatly.
Thank you. You, ma'am.
Mary Alice Culver, just a community member. And I'm finding it unconscionable that Cornell is ramming down, um, this timeline that none of us have really adequately been able to, um, to address, including students, the community members. Um, I know that there are some things that are really missing, and the biggest thing is the E I S and the SEACER. And they should not be allowed to do this. I'm asking the planning board to do due diligence and ask for an environmental impact statement. It's just the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak before the board on this project?
Okay, you have a seat then. We'll be receiving a variety of, uh, comments from conscientious citizens who have scrutinized Cornell's application. Uh, they go into some great detail in a number of things technically. Um, but they have pointed out that Cornell has built this entire case for using natural gas on a false assumption that its plan to eventually heat these buildings with earth-source heat is going to offset the temporary use of natural gas. The likelihood that earth-source heat will be realized within the timeframe predicted is shaky at best. This method is in the early experimental phase. It has many engineering and financial gifts about it, and it could easily take years for it to be in place. We can't wait that long, given the urgency of climate change. I'm a Cornell, been through and through. Three generations of my family have received a total of five degrees from Cornell, and five of us have either taught or worked at Cornell. My loyalty to Cornell runs deep. Sadly, my respect and love for Cornell have been shaken by learning about Cornell's approach to this project. With its proposal, Cornell has betrayed its own stated commitment to achieve carbon neutrality by 2035. I don't understand why this application is so inadequate. Given the number of questions that we have about this proposal, it falls to you as trusted public officials to do your due diligence by insisting that an I E S be undertaken to, to fully accept, uh, assess the problem.
Thank you very much. And please do provide your written comments to Anya, so we can...
I'm sorry, I don't pick myself up.
Others wishing to speak before the board on this project?
Great evening, everybody. My name's Anthony. I studied environmental engineering at Cornell University the past four years. Now, I'm a proud citizen of Ithaca. A large-scale development such as the north campus, uh, housing that we're planning on building. Uh, I appreciate the efforts that the architects and engineers had to make the building L E E the goal. However, any, uh, large-scale development or any development that Cornell wants to pursue with cannot use, uh, natural gas, knowing that New York State has outright banned the practice. It is hypocritical and untenable for us to use natural gas from another state passing on those environmental externalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. Uh, others wishing to speak on this project? Gentlemen up front.
So I'll take my time, just to clarify, are you going to hold over the public hearing to the next meeting?
Uh, assuming there are people waiting to speak when we're finished here, yes.
Yeah, because this has been a moving target. Uh, there's been piecemeal introductions of new information. I don't know, did you have this presentation in advance?
This isn't a question-and-answer session.
Okay, alls I'm gonna say is that we, you know, you're supposed to have the subject matter of the public hearing available to the public. We can't comment on things that are introduced just before we speak. Anyway, the one thing I would like to say is that, uh, you know, by my calculation, six hundred single-family homes converting from fossil fuel heating to heat pumps would be replaced by the amount of gas that's released in this project. And the chair, the Heat Smart Hopkins Board, we have done less than a hundred and two years. We spent a hundred and fifty thousand, hundreds of hours of, of volunteer labor. It, it's unconscionable that I have to go to homeowners that are trying to reduce their carbon footprint to benefit the community and tell them, it's just not worth it, because you're, or whatever you commit and all your investments are just gonna be wiped out by this project. So I feel very offended by this particular approach, and I, I hope that we are able to see all the documents that we need to do to make effective public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak before the, you, ma'am?
My name is Gina Cassiope, and I found it necessary to drag my baby out of bed to be here to let you know that this is, I mean, you should know, this is horrible for the future. I moved here and was impressed to be in an area that was a college town at Cornell. And I have to say to all the Cornell students and people that graduated that are here, I'm so impressed for you to come out, and it's not easy to speak against a school that you got your degree from or that is here, but it's nice that you're doing what's right. This has affected our community. They are using our lake to heat the water. We now have algae plants, which we've never had before. And for us to ignore the environment and what's happening and not get a complete impact statement is just unreal. And it makes me very angry to know that Cornell built in Lower New York to the highest building standards, because they were held to the highest building standards. So if they want to do this project, they will find the money to do it right. And we need to hold them accountable, to get into their pockets, and do it the right way, not at the cost of all of us that live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak before the board on this project? You, sir.
I'm Alfred Ewing, I'm a professor at Cornell. I begin by quoting from Cornell's application. While the N C R E will increase building square footage on campus by four percent, it will only increase energy use on campus by approximately one point four percent. I want to stress, one point four percent is way too much. That's a big, it's a big piece. So we need an E I S. Um, what's worse, the, if we read Tony, Professor Tony McGravia's writings and others, we know that it's gonna be a lot more impact than what is put in the Cornell statement. And the other thing is dividing this on one point four by four that are mentioned in the statement. It means that there, that the energy used per square foot compared to the rest of the campus will only be thirty-five percent. It's a lot. We should be able to do a lot better when you're comparing to old leaky buildings. There should be uh, a lot better than the, than the, in that reduction. So I'm pleased to learn that Cornell is wanting to improve the building design. We didn't have a chance to really find out about the goal that wasn't mentioned in the advance. I'd also like to suggest a passive, because there are three different ways to evaluate the building energy, at least three. And passive is a house, passive house is what I'd like to see. I want to end by saying we each have a role to play, Cornell, the applicant, two, the interested public, you, the planning boards. I hope you'll do your due diligence and demand an E I S.
Thank you very much. Uh, you, sir.
Hi, I'm Mike. I'm an environmental studies major at Ithaca College. Um, thank you to the board for having me here. Uh, on one point, I do wonder, uh, what, thank you for your work, but I wonder if there are more voices that can be included. Something that comes to mind my first time here. Uh, regarding Cornell, Ms. Wolf, I think that your narrative is...
I've had so many good students who came out tonight and everyone else. Um, I've been to now five presentations by Cornell, including the little one tonight. I'm okay if they keep changing their plan, because they want to tighten up the building envelope or look for additional energy conservation. In fact, that's exactly what would honor their students and their climate goals. If they were to put into writing that the building would be designed to meet passive house or close to net zero standards, I'd stop pointing out the health, safety, and ethical problems of burning more methane for the next two decades. At least then they could claim the building was built with the future in mind, and the increase, small increase amount of methane, uh, would be required, I could live with. But I still have questions about Cornell's credibility. There have been so many inconsistencies with their data. A few things that came up in the presentations. It was a shock to me to hear Mr. Byer say that the tech campus buildings aren't really built at net zero standards after all, especially since Cornell puts that intention and implied claim in the first paragraph of every glowing press release. And it was another shock on September twelfth to hear him say at the city planning committee that the North Court campus dorms, if built at thirty percent better than the energy code, would be more energy efficient than the tech campus dorm that was supposed to be built at passive house standards. How could this be? The information that they're providing is inconsistent and problematic. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could submit that written, uh, comment you have, I would love to make sure that the board has a chance to read that. Others wishing to speak before the board on this project? So we have three minutes left, and if we don't have people waiting to speak in three minutes, we're not going to extend it to next month. Going, ah, there.
Well, my name is Tessa Sage Flores, and I live in Ithaca. And I, boy, do I ever not understand why we, who all want to say the same thing, which has been said already so many times, that we are really upset with this project. This project is using methane, which is the most potent destructor of our climate. And that baby needs place to live in twenty years. And Cornell cannot be caught red-handed pretending they don't know, or they can't. They don't have enough energy, power, intelligence, resources to make something that is really gonna work for our future. And I'm just so mad. You have to have another meeting about this. How can you require us to just keep spouting off? You need to do the work. And, and say no. Say no. There has to be a lot more due diligence and environmental impact statement, a SEACER, and a pass, or whatever the third thing was that somebody mentioned up here. So I just don't get it. Why can't you have another meeting?
We're gonna have lots of meetings.
Thank you very much. Others wishing to speak before the board on this project? You, I saw your hand, the lady in the booth here.
Thank you so much for, um, having the public hearing tonight. We do ask as a public that you extend this to the next meeting. My name's Claudia Bramer, and it's my understanding that this is a type-one action. You've already determined that this is a type-one action, and that is presumed to have a significant environmental impact, requiring the preparation of an E I S. And all you need to determine is that there's the potential for one significant adverse environmental impact in order to require an E I S, and you have that here. You've heard many people discussing the environmental impacts, the emissions, upstream, downstream, all over the place. You have what you have, what you have in front of you, what you need to require an E I S. And I request that you do ask the applicant to prepare an E I S for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have reached the end of our time for public comment on this project. As there are people waiting to speak, uh, we will be doing this again next time Cornell looking for us for the N C R E. If the applicant will please come back forward.
Does anybody need the email address before I kick it down?
So before we dive back into board comments and questions, I thought you might want to take a couple minutes and respond to what you heard from the public.
I think it's been a really emotional night for the people who are here tonight, and they're really passionate and, and dedicated. And, um, it's frustrating that they feel like we're not on the same team. I, I do encourage anyone here who hasn't read the materials, that we submitted, to please do so. Um, there's a fair amount of listservs and propaganda and information going on that isn't linked to the actual document. So, so if you're feeling like you don't have information, please find it. It's on the city website. Um, and then also, um, I don't think that this group is, uh, presenting new information. Uh, there was a comment by, I believe it was, I forget, it was either Buzz or Brian Eden, that was Brian Eden. All the information about the building that Arvin spoke about today is embedded in the document. And it just was simple to understand, because Arvin was explaining it, and they were, you know, point by point, but it's already there. Um, there's not, the only new piece of information is that the development of the drives has, um, led to, um, an analysis that, that lets us see that we're really gonna reach the goal. And from the very beginning, we did say that silver was the minimum, and that we were only in schematic design, and what a higher standard was, we saw afterwards. So it's, it's, um, I think it's disingenuous to, to characterize it as some evil plot to hide the information from people. So please look at the materials.
Questions and comments from the board? I can leave this off if we don't want to all jump on it. Uh, one of the things you've heard many times from the public was request for an E I S. Now, we can't do an E I S just because the public wants it. There's a legal standard, uh, for making that determination. So perhaps Joanne, or Lisa, or both of you could just briefly go through what we need to consider when deciding whether or not to require an E I S.
Well, the board has to know what additional information it needs from the applicant in order to further the analysis, um, of the topic. Um, so far, what we've, uh, we really haven't discussed this project at all, uh, at any length, and, and what we've really heard, um, the information and the concern about is the use of natural gas in this project. Um, so the board would have to, I would encourage everyone to read all of the information. If there are outstanding questions that are not in this document that you would like Cornell to address, and you don't feel that they have addressed it and they need to do more, um, research, give us more answers, then that would be a basis for environmental impact statement.
So to summarize, if there's questions that aren't being answered, that we feel like we can only get answered via an E I S. We require an E I S.
Correct.
So I think this, we have on the agenda setting a special meeting to dive into the project more in depth, which I think we should, we should talk about here before too terribly long. Before we go into that, perhaps this is a good time to talk about outstanding questions that we have and additional information we might want from the applicant, either to be presented in that special meeting or just as part of the process we go through. Um, you know, if the standard fear of E I S is about unanswered questions, I think we should talk about the unanswered questions.
Um, I'll be the first to say that I, I do think that there are unanswered questions, and I'm not certain what those questions are yet. We have a lot of new material to go through. Um, and so I, for one, would just request a little bit more time to review comments and some of the, um, material from the applicants. Um, and I'll also just, you know, go on the record to say that I don't think that, I don't see any evil plot. Of course, for there to be like a lack of transparency, I do see a missed opportunity to set a higher standard for buildings in Ithaca. And, um, and part of me thinks if we don't ask it of Cornell right now, then who do we ask of it and when? Um, I've also learned over my tenure on the planning board that we can't make, we can't make decisions based on feelings. Um, you know, which is why we have SEACER and environmental impact statements to, um, to help us ground ourselves. Um, and also, I don't feel great about the project right now, given that we, we're only getting public controversy from it. Um, I would really love to find some space where the project can move forward. We're not creating ridiculous delays, but also the legacy of Cornell and Shroebert Group and Mike. and Michaels is one that leaves the public feeling that they can trust that work. And we're not there yet. And I do think that whether or not it's in writing, that's something that's important to me as a member of this board, is to make sure that as many people as possible feel as if due diligence was done on our behalf. So I am unofficially in favor of an environmental impact statement, but I think that I personally just want a little bit more time to figure out exactly what those questions are that this board has that are not yet answered.
Thank you, Mackenzie. From other people on the board, outstanding questions, information you feel like we don't have? Garrett?
It's not, I think it might be useful for everyone involved, I don't know, Joanne or Lisa, if you could speak to this now or next month, but in the last decade or so, how common has it been for EIS statements to be developed for residential buildings in Ithaca?
Chainworks?
West, West Campus, North Campus.
So about four, about four over a decade? So there was one for West Campus and West Campus, College of Ontario's?
North Campus.
Both campuses? In Chainworks.
That's good context, that's a good question.
I still, and I still think we need to really focus on the material that's been submitted and decide what more information.
Of course, and it's one of the, architecturally.
Yeah, yeah.
Other outstanding questions from the board?
I mean, I think, you know, my question about lead platinum is still unanswered. The question about passive house or net zero is still unanswered. I'm not clear what the constraints are from institutional perspective of why we can't move the project in that direction. And I'm seeing a lot of data. I think the data needs to be clarified because I think we're getting two stories. We're getting one from folks in the public who have experience, who are, you know, former professors or other people, other experts in the community, and we're having your team provide us data. I, I'm unclear which to believe, and I think we do need more time. I think, Mackenzie, you're right on the mark about the pace of this project seems to be precluding a really careful sort of debate and dialogue about these issues. So I think that leads to sort of tentative support of an EIS as well to really get through these, these issues.
Other questions from the board that might be outstanding?
I've got a question, but it's sort of supportive of what Mackenzie and Mitch said. You know, I've read this whole thing, and I've gone back to it after each meeting, specifically the energy portion, and questioned it and tried to understand it better myself. So I probably leafed through it three times and read it fully at least once. And I still don't feel qualified to say whether I have more questions. So I second the pace slowing down and wonder if there's a way to have an outside expert support the board in understanding, you know, are Tatum's numbers right? Are Cornell's numbers right? Are the, you know, the PhDs we see in the audience and the students and interested parties' numbers right? So that's my question as opposed, is there somebody that can help us organize and secure?
So Joanne, I saw you nodding with respect to outside experts.
Well, seeker certainly allows for the board to seek expertise and is something that, because it is, I have to admit, I read and read it, still I don't feel like I'm getting a lot of clarity because it's just beyond my field of expertise. So yes, we can certainly do that if the board decides.
You could find someone to.
The applicant would actually provide a secret allows for them to.
That might be something worth looking into. I don't know what the decision process for that is, but I think that there's a level of technical analysis that we feel like we need help with. I don't think there's any reason to wait for an EIS to go get that help. So yeah, well, let's take a hard look at that. Other questions and comments from the board? Speaking for myself, I'm sure you've addressed it to some extent in the large volume of materials that we have. Public participation, particularly student participation. You know, I understand there was a process, but my sort of rule of thumb on public participation is if people feel like they're not being heard, they're probably not being heard. And I'm hearing from students that they don't feel like they're being heard. So I might want that addressed somehow, either call that out in the materials, defend the process, or add to the process, however you want to address that, I think it's worth addressing.
I do.
Other questions and comments from the board? Not seeing any, so I think we should discuss about scheduling a special meeting on this. Lisa had proposed an October 30th date because that's a fifth Tuesday, which is convenient since we're meeting on the fourth Tuesday. What are people's thoughts on that?
And what would the purpose of this meeting be?
To dive into the project. I don't, I don't know that we're going to bound it more specifically than that, although we certainly can. But the idea to have a work session on this project that's not distracted by the normal business of my board.
And that, and there would maybe be a public hearing then, or would this be just for the board and the applicants?
I would say probably not. We would, we would just focus on the work. We'd probably continue doing the public sharing of the board meeting, so that would be the doctrine.
Okay.
Lisa?
I just wanted to say, I think it would be a time for you to, you know, discuss the potential outstanding pieces of information we might want and determine, as I said, whether those things, you know, whether the questions are answerable or not. Again, an EIS would be if the questions aren't answerable, if the information could be.
So it might mean that we go through all of the materials again and figure out what questions we have before that meeting? I mean, I sort of know the general categories of questions we have around like quantifying greenhouse gas emissions long-term, around like analyses of alternatives and why they're not feasible right now. And I know that they're, the materials speak to some parts of some of those questions. So I sort of feel like we need, I feel like we need help to distill some of the material into what we want to ask before we present those questions to the applicant?
Is it reasonable to think about having whatever outside professional help the board might want at that meeting? Or is that too tight a timeline? Yeah, I mean, I understand it's a tight timeline.
It seems like five weeks away to secure somebody. And I mean, we could, would, would you, would, would the applicant present it our regular October meeting?
I don't know. Sorry. That would only be in advance.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. I don't know if it'd be, I don't.
I mean, I also just wanted to, so, I mean, obviously, we need to go back and think about this ourselves in terms of what we think is, you know, the best, how we can best help you understand this information. And so I think we've heard some additional requests tonight, and I mean, it would be appropriate, I think, so, I mean, certainly at that special meeting, if it's appropriate, we could potentially provide more clarification on some of the things. Because I think there are, I think in many cases, a lot of the questions that you're asking, I think it's a big topic, right? So I think a lot of the information does exist on a lot of the questions that you've asked. It's a matter of organizing it and getting it before you. So I just offer that as a consideration, and we can certainly, you know, work with you about what things we thought we could bring to that meeting and, you know.
I think, given that multiple people on the board have asked for more time, I think a work session makes a lot of sense. Is there anybody on the board that isn't available or not excited about doing that October 30th session? Let's plan to do that. If the applicant can do it, let's move on doing the October 30th special session.
Garrett, I mean, I think one thing that comes to mind is, you know, the question, are there, are there questions that aren't being answered? And to me, every question I've asked to the applicant has been answered thoroughly with a lot of data. Now, one of the things I hear from the public is, well, their answer is wrong.
Sure.
And then you get into a kind of a technical debate, which, you know, I don't have the technical background and expertise to evaluate. And so, you know, it might be good as due diligence to have a third party that could look at the numbers and maybe look at some of the counterarguments that members of the public, some, you know, some of whom are experts, have proposed and sort of say, you know, that the answers we're getting from Cornell look reasonable or, you know, more analysis needs to be done. Because if the answers are incomplete, then we do need an EIS. But to my mind, they are complete, but I leave it, I totally welcome somebody else to, you know, give me some backup on that or say, no, they're not.
So do you feel like we need to have this third party in order to have the special meeting? Do you think we can have the special meeting whether we get the third party on board by then or not?
I think that there are two separate things that we're discussing. I think we're talking about getting help from an independent body and having a special meeting with the applicants. And I'm not sure that it would, I'm not sure that those things happening concurrently is the, or is the, is the best course of action, I guess. And Garrett, my question to you is, you've asked questions and you feel like they've all been answered, and I'm, you know, just, I'm curious, do you feel like you know why alternatives, why renewable energy alternatives are not, like, do you, do you feel like you have clarity there?
Yeah, I mean, so the presentation last month, Steve, you know, basically went through very carefully why the current proposal is better than using heat pumps. And heat pumps, at least on the surface, appear to be fossil fuel-free, but if you push on that a little bit, you know, they're, they're not, at least according to the analysis that I heard. And I found that explanation to be pretty convincing. But, you know, if there are alternative points of view, I'd be very open to hearing them. You know, I think the concern most I hear from the public is that they're not accounting for upstream methane emissions in Pennsylvania. I'm very sensitive to that. But the counterargument that I heard from the applicant last semester is, well, this is better. I mean, basically, there's no perfect technology that exists today. And so it's a question of whether when the applicant proposing is better in terms of emissions in the long run versus, you know, the alternative, which I guess would be heat pumps. And I found their explanation to be convincing, but if, you know, our experts just say they've done the math wrong, I'd, you know, be happy to hear that.
Yeah, I will say personally, I find myself in a relatively similar position as Garrett. I am not overwhelmed with a lot of outstanding questions. I feel like what we've seen has been pretty direct and readable. The confusion I have is that we're hearing from the public and the public says something different. And I think weighing the arguments requires a level of sophistication that, you know, one way we get around it, we spend more time on it. The other way we get around it is we use some third-party help. But I mean, I don't find myself in a position of, wow, I've got this big long list of questions and Cornell's ignoring them. You know, that, that's not where I'm sitting. So we talked about the questions that we had outstanding right now. We talked about scheduling the special meeting. People seem to be in support. We've talked about trying to secure third-party, you know, analysis. What else do we want to discuss with Cornell now that we have them at the moment and not wait till the next time? Because obviously, there's going to be many meetings on this project. I see you, Joanne, you got something?
I do, I do want to bring up the issue of whether or not we can look at upstream emissions and natural gas through this local seeker process. Seeker is a local environmental review. It's not, you know, so I really have a question about that, and I, I just want to, you know, we don't require other projects to document their upstream emissions of, you know, that, so that's a question I have, you know, I mean, can we even look at that? Because that's more of a look at the whole distribution system of energy and then, so I have a question about whether that can be part of a seeker process for one project. And if it is, then does it have to be a seeker for every single project?
Is that a legal question? Is that a legal question? Is there a legal answer to that?
A seeker question.
I mean, seeker question, I mean, seeker is a local, and we can look beyond, you know, local, but I don't.
Well, I think that there is a question of scale, right? And the projects that we just talked about having gone through an EIS were projects of considerably larger scale than what we're normally seeing. And so the assumption would be that the embodied energy or the externalities of the effects of that embodied energy have a greater impact than a smaller project.
Yes.
I mean, I don't think it's totally unfounded for us to think about the greater, the effects beyond the local community when, that we know we're talking about 2,000 beds as opposed to 14.
I totally, I just, I'm, I don't know, I don't mean to have a back and forth, but and, but I totally agree with that, but none of those projects do we look at gas. None of those projects do we look at upstream emissions in Pennsylvania. You know, that's not, was not looked at, and I'm not saying, I'm just, I'm saying, it's, it's out there, and I think we have to get our hands on it.
The applicant has something.
If I may, I don't necessarily know the bigger legal answer to your question. I do know that upstream emissions are not part of the makeup of an EIS. They're not, it's in the PEC guidelines for assessing carbon emissions in an environmental impact statement. Those things I do know are true. And maybe the question is answered in terms of a question about relevance. If you had all the numbers on upstream gas and upstream and the methane emissions, and we wrote this in a letter, but if, if doing a project as proposed makes this much carbon emissions and the alternative makes, let's just say, you know, one-third more, the upstream gas methane emissions are proportionally amplified. So it's irrelevant, it's kind of irrelevant because the decision is still from the beginning to be the most conservative with energy. And I, I understand the concerns and the, and the activism here, but in terms of seeker, I'm not sure that that information is actually relevant to your decision-making because in the end, the one that uses the least amount of energy and produces the least emissions is going to produce the least upstream methane. So the charge is just going to look the same.
I think, I think I hear what you're saying, and then also, I feel like the conservation of energy is one piece of it, and sourcing of energy is another piece. And, and we are, it, I think partly is that we're experiencing the tension of a changing tide in how the city wants to address the sourcing of energy. We have new, like, new guidelines around green buildings that didn't exist before. And, I mean, and it's very, very possible that we, that seeker might need to catch up to, to what this, to what, to our standards, to the new standards that we're trying to create. And, I don't know, that's, that's.
I also think it's a unique situation that we have an applicant that produces their own power. Right? So we're all trying to understand that piece of it as well, which you've given us a lot of data on. But for that reason, I think reviewing it just will take more time to understand that piece.
Going back to just context, I realized prior year, this is early for context, and I hadn't realized that North and West in the past had had an EIS. I'd be curious, just for context, to know what the, what the issues were there. I've been on the board for, I think, eight years, and the only EIS I've been through is Chainworks, so those must have been.
Prior.
Prior. But in the eight years I've been on the board, I, I'm not going to be, I can't say I remember every project, but the vast majority of residential buildings we build have just competed with natural gas without any of the additional technologies that this proposal encompasses. And we've never said anything about it. And now, we are, you know, I think based on public comments and other things, talking about methane in Pennsylvania, and basically topics that have never come up before. And one question I have is, you know, are those topics germane just because of the scale of this project, in which case, you know, we should carry on the discussion? Or is this project being invited at a different standard, in which case I think it's not germane and we should carry, you do? So I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but I mean, we've never held a project to this level of scrutiny on energy systems in eight years I've been on the board.
I think that point's really well taken. I, I think also that Emily's point about having an applicant that produces its own power, giving us perhaps more to look at with respect to sourcing of energy is pretty, I mean, I think those things tie in together pretty closely, and I'm not sure where we're going to fall. Yeah, the applicant has something.
Just, Garrett, just in response to your being unaware of, North and West have environmental impact statements, those were, those were not a planning board decision, those were a Cornell saying, just pause that, let's move on.
That's right, thank you.
So that, that was not a decision made by the board.
Oh, okay, that's, that's, thank you for telling me, I didn't know that, that's very helpful.
I forgot, you're right, you're absolutely right. Do you mean that Cornell volunteered to conduct an EIS for those?
Oh, very interesting.
There may be a lot of, like, resistance to it, I suppose.
Well, I think that this is a different animal. I think that this is a development in a, in a place where the infrastructure is there, where the students are there, where it's on highly developed sites, where it doesn't affect other neighborhoods, where the, there aren't a lot of significant, there aren't significant negative impacts, so traffic is very little and the building is really tight. The energy system at Cornell, I, I do not want to disrespect these people who honestly have felt very much the same way about climate change, but this is a good project. And so I don't, I'm not the one who makes the decision, that's your decision.
I mean, and we did talk about this at length and, and we couldn't see really any major negative impacts that would force us into an environmental impact statement. This energy piece has, has come up as a, as a community concern and I think the questions that Garrett raised and Lisa raised are really good ones. I mean, so I think we do need to think about this and we need to sort of wrap our brains around it. And I also think that as staff, we need some outside guidance on this one because it is a new, climate change is, is a big topic. And I'm not sure where development in the city of Ithaca falls into that and what we should be looking at.
Attempt to leave it there for tonight. I think if boards, if the board members have things they want to say, just sort of a parting shot, we can do that. I suspect the applicant has something.
I want to just ask one question. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were proposing a special meeting for October 30th, you said 30th? I misunderstood. Just, I was just wondering if it would be more productive, if it were possible, to have a before the next planning board meeting, to have a special meeting, the working session before the planning board meeting? Just wanted to ask.
Sure. We like to have our special meetings on Fifth Tuesdays just because it's convenient for board members. That doesn't mean it's the only time we can do it.
We could, we'll send out a, to a poll.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can do. I, I, it wouldn't, it wouldn't shock me if it ends up on the 30th just because that's an easy time for board members without their commitments to do special meetings.
I also just like to encourage board members to, since we have spent a lot of time on the energy piece, just be sure that you look at the other pieces within the document and if you have any questions, clarifications or concerns, be sure to note those too because it is, there are many other aspects of this project that we should be making attention to.
Particularly, I just want to say transportation. We'll be getting lots of comments from town and county heights of transportation and we're going to need to evaluate those to see if, you know, there's any missing.
I mean, we talked about transportation last month, but I don't feel like I have any outstanding questions about transportation.
With the, the other involved agencies might present questions that you may want to address or may not.
Final comments from the board?
We could get a chance to say, what he was saying, if we'd like to see the answer. You know, then we could get all the.